A thoughtful alternative and poor judgment. Jordan was subjected to violence by a fellow subway rider, Daniel Penny, who took his life. Jordan should be alive today. No one deserves what he was subjected to on that train. The fact that Daniel Penny was not charged after killing Jordan stands in stark contrast to the way that other New Yorkers, especially people of color, are treated and certainly would have been treated on that day. There must be accountability for Jordan's killing at the hands of another person. We have to be honest about Jordan's life being devalued because he was a black man, and that just doesn't apply to his being killed, but also how authorities responded, how the media has covered his killing, and how the discussions of his killing have proceeded. It also applies to his not receiving adequate care and support before he ever stepped on to that train. This should be a moment of reflection for all of us about systemic racism and a call to action to change the inequities that leave so many New Yorkers and communities without safety and without access to the care and opportunity and resources for health and for success. This may be about mental health, but it's certainly about so much more. And the investments we make in the people of our city are very critical. It's why we can't afford a budget that fails to invest in the essential services our communities and New Yorkers have been denied again and again. What does it say about us that instead of investing in what people need, we actually allow the response to be violence? What does it do to us as human beings to witness such casual acts of brutal violence time and time again? And what will this tragedy ultimately do to the witnesses of a murder on a subway train? Who will monitor the long-term trauma and PTSD that this death has surely caused to these riders? This cannot be our norm, and this doesn't have to be our reality. We can build a city and a society that meets the needs of all people. As a government, it must be our priority to bolster the infrastructure that delivers housing, mental health care, food assistance, and economic opportunity. That is what Jordan and so many New Yorkers need and deserve. This New York City Council is fighting for a city budget that does not deny the people of our city the chance to live in health, safety, and dignity. We're pushing and calling for the administration to join us in delivering on this for all New Yorkers. Moving on to Title 42. The Trump-era pandemic public health restriction is set to expire today. And as we prepare for the potential increase in people seeking asylum in our country, we must take stock of the tools that are within our city's control to help ease the challenges of assisting our new arrivals. Everyone understands that the increasing number of unhoused people in our city, including those seeking asylum in the United States, has presented challenges. While we recognize the serious circumstances facing our city from the international migration of people seeking refuge, we must not forego our responsibility of caring for all who seek shelter. The right-to-shelter legal requirements provide important protections that safeguard the safety of children, families, and individuals. The city's preparation for this phase of Title 42's expiration seems to have led the administration to convey that it cannot comply with the existing law, which is deeply troubling. As a council, we maintain our concerns that the city has lacked focus on effective planning for New Yorkers stuck in the shelter system for increasingly longer periods of time to transition into housing. These efforts, which we have consistently urged over the last seven months, could help release pressures and open space in the shelter system. This was an opportunity to improve the management and delivery of essential services for all New Yorkers while addressing counterproductive policies that keep people in shelters for too long. A focus on improving policies that help New Yorkers transition into permanent housing more quickly would reduce the extent of spending on expensive emergency shelters and HRCs. Instead, we've seen a refusal to eliminate the 90-day rule for housing voucher eligibility, a lack of adequate focus on solutions to move New Yorkers out of shelter, and insufficient coordination and planning. The reality is that if the city doesn't help move people out of shelters, then all we are doing is growing our shelter system on an emergency basis. That inevitably costs us more, and we can only confront these challenges with solutions by working together. There needs to be more questions asked about why this administration refuses to employ these more prudent solutions that are available to the city that require no action by the state or federal government. And the council has sought to partner in achieving this for months. Why has there not been more collaborative and coordinated planning for this moment with those of us willing to be helpful in understanding of the challenges we face? We understand that the city needs support from the state and federal governments. State support has been designated in the state budget, and federal aid is likely to be forthcoming. And of course, we want as much aid as we can get, financial and otherwise. We, as a council, have consistently advocated for this support, and we will certainly continue to do so. Last night's emergency executive order to suspend certain aspects of the right-to-shelter legal requirement is just the latest example of a lack of collaborative and coordinated management. It's quite confounding, because we all want the best for this city. An order of this gravity to suspend the law being released at night with the actual order unavailable to the council and the public, even as media outlets and the administration commented on it, not only raises serious transparency issues, but it is not an example of how to effectively confront a challenge of this magnitude facing our great city. The executive order suspends one local law that already had included in it a clause to allow flexibility as long as there is public notice and consultation with the council. So it seems like an arbitrary and capricious suspension of a local law just to avoid communicating with the public and the council in advance. The suspension of local laws on right-to-shelter removes protections for everyone in our city. There are human lives at stake. Managing New York City government is extremely difficult. There is always a crisis, or several, that we face. New York has lived it with COVID-19, 9/11, and so much more. But the only way that we confront challenges is by working together in a constructive fashion, because otherwise our success as a city is very much in jeopardy. This is not us against them. We're all New Yorkers, and my concern is that there are divisions being set up that don't serve our city or the people in it whose well-being is at stake. We persevered through the worst of a global pandemic that devastated our city more than any other place in this entire country just three years ago. That should be our guide, which shows that when we work together to confront a challenge, we succeed. We can have different perspectives and visions, that's okay. But when the lack of coordination and collaboration is risking our city's success, that's a problem that must be addressed. I don't gratuitously criticize or seek to score cheap political points, because that is fruitless. When I offer a different view, it's informed by an understanding of the various perspectives and considerations, including those I may not necessarily agree with. To pursue what I believe is in the best interest of our city, the one that we all love, that is New York City, and that's what New York City government needs to focus on. That's how we serve our people. Now let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution amending a previously granted tax exemption for one building in the Lower East Side in Councilmember Rivera's district. Two pre-considered resolutions to authorize Article 11 exemptions for two buildings in Bedford-Stuyvesant in Councilmember Osay's district. A pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for two buildings in Corona and Councilmember Moya's district. A pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 11 exemption for one building in Bushwick in Councilmember Nurse's district. And a pre-considered resolution to authorize an Article 5 exemption for one building in Kips Bay in Councilmember Rivera's district. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. 23-10 Queens Plaza South will facilitate the enlargement of an existing four-story building, which will result in a 26-story commercial building that will include office, retail, and community facility uses in Councilmember Wan's district. 2560 Boston Road rezoning will facilitate a new nine-story mixed-use development, including approximately 333 affordable housing units, a 15,000-square-feet supermarket, and a community facility space in Councilmember Velazquez's district. And the Coordinated Street Furniture Franchise Agreement, a Department of Transportation request for the council's support in amending and extending the current 20-year agreement to a 25-year term with franchisee J.C. Decal to facilitate the expansion of bus shelters and automated public toilet installations citywide. Next, we'll vote on the following pieces of legislation. First, we'll vote on Resolution 129, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, which calls on the Department of Education to provide bicycle safety instruction in public schools. Next, we'll vote on Resolution 156A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, which calls on New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Treatment Not Jails Act. The state legislation would expand eligibility for court-involved individuals to receive treatment for mental illness and substance abuse rather than be sent further into a criminal justice system that is not adequately equipped to address their underlying health-related issues. Next, we will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Coming out of the Housing and Buildings Committee, sponsored by Chair Birina Sanchez. Introduction 434A will expand the heat sensors program, which was established in 2020 as an additional tool for enforcing the Housing Maintenance Code. Under the Heat Sensors Program, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development selects 50 multifamily buildings aimed at targeting the worst offenders to install heat sensors in the living room of every apartment in the selected buildings. The devices help monitor indoor temperatures to ensure that property owners are in compliance with the Housing Maintenance Code. This legislation builds upon the existing heat sensors program by expanding the number of participating buildings selected, improving notice to tenants, and increasing HPD's inspection requirements. And Introduction 875B will amend the city's administrative code, the city's plumbing code, the New York City Building Code, the New York City Mechanical Code, and the New York City Fuel/Gas Code to make technical corrections, clarifications, and updates. Let me just check something here. Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure we were getting in order. All right, I invite Councilmember Sanchez to come forward and speak now on those bills.
Thank you, thank you, Speaker. So these couple pieces of legislation, another one that's being passed, sponsored by the public advocate, they were heard on December 6 hearing on the Housing Maintenance Code. And one refrain that came clear during that hearing, and that we heard from colleagues and we heard from the public, is simple. New Yorkers should not need to call 311 time and time again to report the same issue, only to have their landlord possibly ignore the violation or not resolve the root cause or the root issue. And if violations are not being corrected in a timely fashion, these bills today, they are saying that landlords must be held accountable. As it gets warmer out, we need to keep our eyes on the prize. It will get cold again. This intro, a number 434, will expand the heat sensors program, established by local law of 18 of 2020. And what it's going to do is that it's going to select buildings with a history of heat and hot water violations to install Internet-capable temperature reporting devices. Given early successes of that 2020 implementation, despite implementation challenges, mostly there was lack of compliance by certain buildings, and there were lags of information going to HPD, this bill is going to double the number of buildings in the program and require building owners to submit temperature reading data to HPD every 30 days instead of twice a heat season, so that HPD can better act on the data, and require HPD to conduct more regular inspections of these heat-offending buildings. The expansion of this program will hold bad actors accountable when they refuse to maintain heat in buildings and relieve tenants of having to constantly follow up time and again with HPD to get these heat issues resolved. I thank the Speaker for making it more expensive, more difficult to be a bad landlord in the city of New York. 875 is a very technical bill, so we won't talk too much about it, except to say that it also is moving our city in the direction of protecting the green energy laws that we have passed, and very excited and thankful for the leadership of our Speaker.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Next, Introduction 583A, sponsored by our public advocate, Jomani Williams, will increase penalties for violations issued by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development and requires HPD to maintain a certification of correction watch list. Any listed landlord on this watch list would be prohibited from certifying correction of violations in multiple dwellings unless HPD has attempted at least two re-inspections or those violations are excluded from the calculations that identify buildings on the watch list. I invite the public advocate to speak about his legislation.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. First, I just want to, again, associate myself with all your words on Jordan Neely and Title 42. And once again, thank you for your courageous leadership on issues and always stepping up when some others are not. So thank you so much for that. Last year's worst landlord watch list saw the most violations in its history, as buildings deteriorate and rents rise under landlords who put profits over people. So to be clear, we have a more deteriorated housing stock, but we have historic high rents. They exploit loopholes to shamelessly dodge accountability and avoid repairs while tenants suffer. The bill before the council today would target a practice we have found as rampant in compiling the list each year: self-certification, when landlords falsely declare violations to be resolved and repairs to be made. Passing Intro 583A, the second half of the Worst Landlord Accountability Act, will prevent the worst owners in the city from self-certifying repairs that haven't been made and increase penalties for failing to fix violations so that these fines aren't just part of the cost of doing business as it is now. It will require HPD to compile the 100 worst buildings by violations in the city in which they have been repeated instances of false certifications and prevent bar any violations of that building from self-certifying for a year, requiring inspection by HPD and correction by the landlord. Our annual list is designed in part to shame the worst landlords in the city, but for owners who are shameless in their negligence, this law will hold them to account and deliver relief to countless tenants facing unlivable conditions. By passing this legislation, I am hopeful that we can help tenants get the repairs that they need, make the worst landlords pay for their negligence and deception, and show that there are consequences for the conduct that lands you on our list. And I'm proud this being done at the same time as the package of legislation that was just mentioned. I think it would do great wonders for our housing. I want to thank the Speaker for her continued leadership on this issue, and Chair Sanchez as well, and all the council members who co-sponsored the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, public advocate. Next, Introduction 644, sponsored by Councilmember Nantasha Williams, would require the Department of Education to post information on its website to inform New Yorkers on how to establish after-school programs. I invite Councilmember Williams, who does have a migraine, and she is a rock star today, to come forward and speak about her legislation.
Councilmember Stevens is hating on my shades, but of course, the wonderful Speaker understands that I'm having a migraine. So I'm not that cool of a kid, but I wanted to be here to make sure that I spoke on the bill that we're going to pass today. After-school programs really changed my life. I know how critical they are to New Yorkers, especially latchkey New Yorkers who don't have things to do after school. For younger students, to have their parents know that they're in a safe place is super important, but unfortunately, there is a lack of resources and information on the resources that even exist. So I'm excited to pass this bill. And when I think about after-school programs, I think about those wraparound services, those safety nets. And I would be remiss, because we had a press conference earlier, I would be remiss if we didn't talk about Jordan Neely and the fact that similar services, like an after-school, like mental health services, were not available to this young man. He did not have a safety net to support him, which ultimately led to his murder. And so I am, again, excited to be passing this bill today. I also want to congratulate my colleague, Councilmember Shawna Brayu, who we passed his bill through my committee, and it'll go a long way for New Yorkers in terms of appearance-based discrimination. Thank you so much.
Introduction 868, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would require the DOE to report annually on the number of students in each school building that provides a District 75 program and the criteria that the DOE uses to determine where District 75 programs are established. I invite Councilmember Stevens to come forward and speak about her important legislation.
Good afternoon, and congratulations to all my colleagues, and a special shout-out to Councilmember Williams. I was an after-school director for a number of years, and those programs are a necessity. And every child in New York City should have access to it. After-school is not just a place where young people go to have fun, but it's an enrichment, and it has proven that young people who are in after-school programs, their grades are higher, and they have more social activities. So excited about that bill and continue to make sure that we have access to after-school for all young people. Today, I'm going to be talking about, it's my pleasure to be passing, Intro 868, which would require DOE to report annually to the Speaker and a number of students in each building that provides District 75 programs and the criteria for DOE to use to determine where District 75 programs are going. It is important that young people who have special needs have District 75 programs in their neighborhoods. Too often, young people are traveling for hours to get to schools to provide the services that they need. This piece of legislation is an investment in our students in addition to where it will require to improve transparency and provide adequate information to guarantee the success of District 75 students. Equality and accessibility is important, especially when we're talking about our children's education. One day, they will be filling our shoes, and they will be walking, and they will be making historical strides, but at first, our city must ensure that we provide our students with the tools and necessities to support their needs and all the stats and efficient data. Thank you, Speaker Adams. Thank you, Borough President Vanessa Gibson, who championed this in her last session in council, and to the advocates who continue to work to make sure that we are cultivating the best education system that we have for our young people across the city. Thank you.
And rounding out this amazing package, Introduction 725, sponsored by Councilmember Lynda Lee, would require the DOE to create a centralized place on its website to allow schools to list their surplus school supplies for other schools to claim. I invite Councilmember Lynda Lee to speak about her legislation.
Thank you, Speaker. And I also want to give our colleagues a shout-out for the package of bills related to the schools. I personally, in my district, have, wow, almost, I will have almost 40 public schools and 14 private schools in my district. And so anything we can do to help further our D-75 students and their access to education, quality education, as well as the after-school programming, as a former social worker, nonprofit social service person, I know that those things are very, very important. And I'm proud today that the City Council will vote to pass Intro 725, which would create a platform for DOE schools to post their surplus supplies and facilitate school-to-school exchanges. And as we know, the end of school is coming up, and I was actually, this is a very grassroots idea that came from a constituent that is a teacher, and she was saying, you know, a lot of the school supplies are left out on the curb, furniture, things that are perfectly in good use. So instead of throwing those things away, how can we streamline the process and actually have other schools that have those needs to be able to utilize those supplies? And these discussions made clear that the need for a system that school administrators could use to communicate and coordinate with one another about their inventories and resources to save precious taxpayer dollars. Given the sometimes pessimistic fiscal predictions, legislation that promotes efficiency and reduces waste is badly needed. And so I just want to thank our council committee staff, colleagues in the Committee on Education, Chair Joseph, Speaker Adams, for bringing this legislation to the floor. Thank you.
Next, we will vote on Introduction 209A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu. That would amend the New York City Human Rights Law to prohibit discrimination based on an individual's height or weight in employment, housing, and public accommodations. This bill would allow employers to consider height or weight in employment decisions when federal, state, or local laws or regulations require it. The Commission on Human Rights could also permit consideration of height or weight should they prevent a person from performing the essential requisites of a job and no alternative is available, or these criteria are reasonably necessary for normal business operations. The bill would also permit similar exemptions for operators or providers of public accommodations, and I invite Councilmember Brayu to speak about his legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, I am overjoyed that this council will have the chance to take a stand for size freedom, banning discrimination on the basis of height or weight in employment, housing, and public accommodations. Every year, 2 million New Yorkers are affected by size discrimination, and we've heard from plenty of them. A luxury brand specialist was sent to the stockroom after giving birth because baby weight didn't fit the company image. A sales associate took some time off to care for her family and put on a few pounds. She was met with snide remarks and questions about her energy level when trying to re-enter the workforce. A student was made to feel like she didn't belong or was an inconvenience for requesting an accessible desk to take notes during her college lecture class. People with different body types are not only denied jobs and promotions that they deserve, their whole existence has also been denied by a society that offers no legal remedy for this prejudice. With today's vote, New York City will become the largest municipality in the country and the world with these protections. It is my hope that other cities and states, and one day the federal government, will take our lead. Our diversity makes us stronger, and with this bill passing today, we're going a long way toward changing the culture around weight. I thank Speaker Adams and her team for their support, as well as the Civil and Human Rights Chair, Nantasha Williams. Thank you, Nantasha. And of course, I thank the advocates who've been working closely with this, with us, to get this over the finish line, the National Association to Advance Fat Acceptance, RWDSU, Retail Action Project, Tigress Osborne, Josh Kellerman, Enno Awatoye, Lydia Green, Dr. Gregory Dodell, and everyone who spoke with us about how they would have been impacted and what this legislation would mean to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brayu. And coming out of the airline industry many years ago, I actually tried to get a friend of mine employed several times, and he was denied for being a flight attendant because of a chip tooth. Thank you for your legislation today. Oh, yes. Finally, we will vote on several bills sponsored by our Criminal Justice Committee Chair, Councilmember Carlina Rivera. That would help our city move towards lowering our jail population as we approach the legal deadline of 2027 to close Rikers and transition to a borough-based jail system. It's abundantly clear that Rikers is undermining public safety for New York City. It exposes everyone there, staff and people who are detained, to violence and trauma, and it exacerbates existing challenges for people to successfully re-enter their communities. We cannot allow Rikers to remain open past this legally mandated deadline, and the city must take active steps to ensure we move forward in a timely fashion. Today's legislation is another step to help address the issues in our jail system and get us to an effective one. Introduction 589A would require the DOC, in consultation with relevant agencies, to submit an annual report on incarcerated pregnant individuals' medical care and outcomes. This report includes specific information on the number of pregnant persons in custody, prenatal and postnatal care, and maternal mortality data. Introduction 806A would establish a comprehensive review process to assess whether people being detained ahead of trial can have their cases resolved or be safely released. The legislation would help facilitate reducing unnecessary pre-trial detention that can lower the excessively high jail population and ensure the successful closure of Rikers. I invite Councilmember Rivera to come forward and speak about this important legislative package.
Thank you. Gracias. Good afternoon. Thank you so much. Thank you to my colleagues. I represent District 2 in the East Side, and Happy Mother's Day to all the moms and the mom figures out there. Sometimes you got to choose your family, you know? First, I want to reject the false and harmful narrative that there is little action the city can take to remedy the humanitarian crisis that is Rikers Island. It is the council's responsibility to hold this administration accountable to the legal mandate to close Rikers by 2027. As Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, I am so proud that today we're putting forward legislative solutions to keep us on track and address the deep dysfunction present in our city jails. Today, we will vote on two of my bills and a resolution. Intro 589 will mandate new reporting requirements on medical care and outcomes for pregnant people who are currently incarcerated. Currently, we have no publicly accessible data on the specific needs of people who are pregnant while in DOC custody. Being pregnant does not just entail unique health needs. It is demanding physically and mentally. It affects every person differently, especially those with higher rates of trauma and mental illness. Pregnancy requires proper care while in custody prior to, during, and after childbirth. Pregnant women should really not be in jail, and those who are incarcerated must be treated with the utmost dignity and respect, and the city must be held accountable for their treatment and their well-being. I've seen mothers holding their babies inside on the island, and their care leading to that point and postpartum should never be in question. We will also be voting on Intro 806, which will establish jail population review programs to each borough to identify people in custody of the Department of Correction whose cases could be resolved or who could be safely placed in community treatment settings instead of jail. The information that these expert teams will produce will fundamentally change the outcomes of people who should not be in Rikers in the first place. They will compile their information, such as their physical and mental health, their psychosocial needs, their previous history with the criminal legal system. All of that must be All of that must be considered in a comprehensive way to get to the point we need to by 2027. With this information, we can also take care of those with serious mental health issues and address the root causes of what keeps our community safe. For decades, organizers and elected leaders have been fighting to close Rikers Island, and in 2019, after negotiating a deal with the mayor, the City Council codified a timeline for closure and transition to more humane facilities that would connect people to their communities. And in order to safely and humanely reduce the jail population to meet the needs of closing Rikers Island through a just transition, we must ensure that people who do not belong in jail are not languishing there. Here is what we know: 90% of people on Rikers are awaiting trial. Detainees at Rikers Island spent an average of 115 days locked up at the jail last year, four times the national average, according to a federal monitor report published last month. New York City can and must do better so that every single New Yorker is safer, and this legislation would enable that. This is what we're doing at the city level. We also need Albany. We need our, our colleagues in the state legislature to pass the Treatment Not Jail Act to expand eligibility for treatment for people with serious mental health needs and focus on community support and programs. I just want to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership, for her support, holding the mayor accountable, because we will not arrest our way out of this issue, and also just for being so steadfast i- in our commitment. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I look forward to continuing to work with you, colleagues, and advocates, and neighbors to finally close Rikers and build a sustainable and more just criminal legal system. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera, and congratulations again on beautiful baby Benito.
Benito.
That concludes our stated agenda. With that, we'll take on-topic questions first in this very brief session, because we got to get to work.
Yeah, so on the bills and...
For that last bill, Council, do you have an estimate of how many people, is it applied for what percentage of the average daily population would be reduced?
There is no number that we've picked that we're trying to reach. It's really about how can we assess the needs, present that to the attorneys, and really bringing together the experts that can determine who is there that should not be, and how we can address those deeper core issues intersectionally.
On-topic questions, on bills? Okay, and briefly, on topic.
Yeah, hi, Madam Speaker.
Hi, Ethan.
Good, very good.
Good.
So earlier, the Comptroller talked about how he feels like there's enough space in the city, you know, you need a number of different types of buildings, and I can't recall all of them, that the mayor really did not have to go to this extreme of suspending parts of Title, I'm sorry, parts of the right-to-shelter law. I mean, what do you think about that? Are there a lot of available spaces that could still be utilized? And I know you've talked about transitioning people to permanent housing mostly, but what do you think of that idea?
Yeah, you know, we, the council had initially offered suggestions, and we still, you know, offer those same suggestions. We are definitely exploring more options. We just have to work on collaborating, and I think that's our biggest challenge right now, the collaboration efforts between both sides of the House. We have remained consistent that we have to make necessary investments and policy changes to help New Yorkers that have been in shelter for way, way too long, and we've got to transition folks into permanent housing. This is what we can do to reduce the pressure. I, I, I think that what the Comptroller says is a piece of it, but we've got some more pieces to put together.
Thank you, Jeff.
Madam Speaker, I'm wondering on the right-to-shelter, is the council considering taking any sort of action, any legal action? I mean, right-to-shelter has been developed over many years, many lawsuits, you know, very long process. Any legislation coming, any legal action coming?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Jeff. It's, it's an important one. We, right now, are exploring all of our options, but it is really important that, that we address the city's challenges that requires collaboration right now. We know that this, this order took place very quickly with really, really no notice, so we're exploring all of our options right now. We've got a few.
Thank you, Kelly. Last question.
Hi, City. I have a question for you. Talk about collaboration and working together. What is it like when you do present ideas to the mayor? Is this team open? Are they receptive to them? How often are you guys having a conversation about this migrant crisis?
This is the most talked-about issue between both sides of City Hall. Asylum seekers, the fact that we need our federal partners to help very, very desperately the situation that we're in, as far as the crisis situation that we're in, different modes to help push us out of these things. Again, we've been really, really pointed about our suggestions to do things a little bit differently. The, the action right now with regard to Title 42 and the executive order, we believe that there were just ways that, we already have places in the law that would have accommodated certain aspects that are now spoken about in this executive order. So, you know, in a lot of respects, we deem this to be totally premature, when we could really work through this if there were to be better collaborations. We do speak, yes, we do, but it takes a lot more than he and I speaking. We've got tremendous teams on both sides of the House. We need to collaborate much more effectively and closely.
Thank you.
And I agree with you, and I agree with you, what you think of the mayor not wanting to speak about Daniel Pendrick and not speaking of his role. I have no idea why the mayor does or speaks to me.
Thank you.
Good question.
There we go.[1776.42]